All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconferencing pursuant to one MRSA subsection four zero three dash A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight two five two five eight. Excuse me, two five eight zero five nine six four and password one two three eight nine nine or via computer at the information available on the calendar on our website. Members of the public may also submit comments, email to in sanfricmaine.org. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic.
Public, which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. Where nobody is just as wrong.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, Councilor Hanselman.
Present.
Council Stockpole.
Present. If I'm not unmuted.
I can hear you perfectly.
All right, okay.
Councilor Tuttle.
Present.
Council Lanigan.
Present.
Council Hurley.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hansler.
Present.
Hi, my name is Tom Cody, Mayor of Sanford. Welcome. Joining me tonight is City Mayor Steve Buck and his Executive Assistant, Mr. Larissa Ricketts. Minutes nineteen dash one zero three zero dash zero one order to approve the meeting from the executive session held on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Do you have a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. We'll do roll call vote. Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stockpole.
Yes.
Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
Yes.
Council Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hansler.
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero nineteen dash one zero three one dash zero one order to approve the minutes from the regular uh city meetings, city council meetings held on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Uh Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stockpole.
Yes.
Council Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
Yes.
Council Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hansler.
Yes.
I am also a yes that also carries seven to zero. Uh Mayor's report, um nothing specific other than, you know, lots of questions and comments in regards to the COVID nineteen uh situation in Sanford. I've been handling uh many of the sort of the questions from the public and uh trying to get back on time and the manner. And that's really what I had. We'll obviously be hearing more about that this evening. Under the the COVID nineteen update on presentations. Uh any subcommittee reports this evening? Okay, see none. We'll turn it over to the City Manager.
I have no report for this evening. The entire day was consumed by COVID nineteen, so I'll cover those elements when we get to the agenda item under presentation.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, on the communications and presentations, we have two this evening. Uh first up is nineteen dash one zero two seven dot zero one. Presentation on property value impacts resulting from land bank activities.
Well, doing an introduction, uh Charles Tuttleman is with us this evening. Charles uh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Charles. Yeah. Charles served as an intern from the University of Southern Maine for us this summer. Uh he comes to us from the Muske School. And Charles did his work this summer. Uh taking the uh land bank information, uh the other demographics and did an examination of of what the land banks work encompassed, how it impacts property values, neighborhood factors and elements such as that. So that being said, I'll turn the presentation over to you, Charles. Charles, I'm going to show this as a PDF inside of the packet, so when you tell me when you want to progress to the next slide, I'll move forward for you and.
All right, that sounds great. Thanks, Steve. All right, so I'll just start uh by saying thank you, council members, for inviting me. Thank you, Steve, for giving me this opportunity. It's been really great looking at uh this program specifically in Sanford. Um and I'll just start off with uh the incentive behind this. Uh I looked at this report uh in the Center for Community Progress regarding land banks and Sanford had already formed them at this point and started uh working towards looking at these properties of concerns and addressing them already. Uh so the intention of uh my project, my research, uh was to take these properties and see their impact over four years between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty on the assessor's values for these properties surrounding them. Uh so this first slide just kind of is from that same report that talks about the impact of these properties on uh adjacent properties surrounding in the neighborhood, decreased property values, decreased tax revenues. Uh and I'll show later on increased costs of public police and public safety and just multiple costs to the town. Uh so what this report is saying that land banks are an effective way to increase land value thus increasing revenue for the town. Uh see if you can go to the next uh scroll down. So the next few slides show the properties of concern in blue. Uh these are just the parcels. There are obviously other parcels surrounding these, but the ones in blue are the listed properties of concern and that ranges from properties that have already been demolished, properties that have already uh had a plan of action created with the um and some that have not been addressed yet. So all of these have been noted by Ian's uh by Ian. He gave me this list. I think this is updated as of July ninth. Is the most updated version of these. So this is the Sanford Island Avenue area. Uh we see a big density around Island Avenue on High Street. Along Brook Street, and if you scroll down a little bit more, see if we can look at Springvale. There's also a few up there as well, a really dense area right along Mill Street. Uh and we we see that a lot of these properties are close together. There are some rural properties that uh we haven't seen a significant impact on. I'll show even more later on, but these dense areas have a large impact. So the more you have within a certain area, and if you scroll down to the next slide. Uh this is just a zoom in of that of Island Avenue, just to focus to really see how dense these properties are in relation to each other. Uh you can keep going, Steve. Uh and this is kind of one of the things I wanted to look at because I noticed a lot of these properties were close together. Uh the same report I mentioned for us and my properties within an eighth of a mile, five hundred feet see a lot more impact. They see a lot more foreclosures. Uh they see a lot more police activity, a lot more medical calls, fire calls and things of that nature. So I looked at, if you scroll down, I in GIS, I created a one eighth mile radius around each of these properties and this is what you're looking at. So around each of all the forty-three properties are concerned, I looked at in this report. Uh I put an eighth mile radius around it and we can see how large these properties can impact. If we're looking at it from the values um just at these properties, it's a large portion of Sanford. And even in that Springvale Sanford, I think if you scroll down, see the next uh one is a close up. This is the Island Avenue. So we can see that if these properties of concerns do impact the surrounding neighborhood, they do build up each other. It's a significant portion of these neighborhoods that are being impacted. Uh I think this is Island Avenue. The next slide will show Springvale. Yes, wonderful. And you can see that all the more, the closer they are together, the darker that circle is and that's where you can see a lot of the property value. So we'll continue on and start looking at the um. Uh you can keep going. See if this is just a zoom in, just look at this. Here are the police calls um as of May third, two thousand and seventeen. This heat map shows where the calls are uh the most common. Here are the hot spots. So if we look at uh that Island Avenue area again, it's red. There's a high density of police calls in that area. And it's similar for medical calls and fire calls. So if you go to the next slide, Steve, you can see that fire calls, it's the same sort of density. There are other parts of the city that don't have these properties of concern. You do see uh density in these calls, uh but specifically around these properties of concern, there's a continued um presence of more calls and that shows cost to the city, cost to the fire department. Not necessarily because of these properties, but just in the neighborhood. You see an increasing calls and the final one will show medical cause. So if you zoom in, uh the medical cause, not as bad, but still you can see the more density. And I think the next three sides show Springvale. If I am correcting, no, that's fine. Uh in Springvale, you do see some of the same calls, not as many as down here, but there is an increased density as well. And when we start looking, Steve, you can go to the next slide, when we start looking at the property values themselves, uh this might be a uh image you guys have all seen before. But you can tell that the tax burden is on the single family homes. And Steve, if you want to chime in anymore to explain this better than me, uh feel free. But what it what this uh report from two thousand and sixteen through the land date came back and said that for single family homes who do have more of the tax burden in the city, their value needs to be above a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's just to create enough tax revenue to break even kind of with all the rental properties as well. Uh and the next one will show um the rental units by age. This just shows that there's a large pop um. I don't have a key for this, but thirty-five point ninety-four percent is, I think, built before nineteen forty. So a lot of these properties in concern, a lot of these neighborhoods, especially in the old mill towns, have older buildings. And if you go down one more slide, Steve, um this is kind of where the land bank um concluded in that study. So if you see that, just move this just to predevelop a little better. Um with the rent rental units getting set eleven percent and their value averaging around sixty thousand, you needed a hundred and ten thousand uh for the single family homes to break even on residential property. And I wanted to utilize, you've already seen some of the GIS work I did before, but from my analysis is to look at the values of the properties. So the first maps, the first area we'll look at is the Island Avenue area we talked about before. So this is an image from two thousand and sixteen. The green, uh the orange are properties below a hundred and ten thousand and the green is are the properties above a hundred and ten thousand or out of range. So this slide and the next slide, it's easier in a PowerPoint form, but if you do ever get the PowerPoint, you can flick back and forth to see if colors change more rapidly. But over a four-year period between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty, as of March twenty twenty, I took the um property values from the most recent assessing poll and you can see that a lot of these properties have already gone above a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um some of them are rental homes, uh some of the properties of concern themselves. So if you look at Sherburne, the corner of Sherburne Street and Island Avenue, those are two problems of concern that haven't changed, but a lot of the properties around them have changed. So over a four-year period, we saw, we saw a lot of these single family homes go above a hundred and ten thousand. And if you recall before, that's really good for getting the tax revenue and creating kind of taking the tax burden off of single family homes once they get above that value. Um the next slide, still looking at the Island Avenue area. Yes, this one. This is the two thousand and twelve version of the property value. So you see a lot of light green, not too much property. Um not too high of a property value, but if you fast forward four years, it's the whole map is, if you scroll down, Steve, it's a lot darker and then to show the comparison, the next slide shows the percent change over a four-year period. So in blue are the properties of concern that are highlighted and the green shows a property growth. Um most of these are above twenty-five percent increase. So although the properties of concerns themselves haven't seen increases, all the surrounding properties have shown great growth over a four-year period. Um this doesn't specifically demonstrate how successful just looking at these properties are, but it definitely contributes to the overall value of the neighborhood. Um like along Brook Street, it's a bunch of positive change and even in those denser areas, looking at North Ave, Sherburne Street, Island Ave, they're all seeing that positive growth. And this is also reflected in other areas of the city. So if you go to the next slide, Steve. Uh this is looking at the Springfield, uh Springvale, and it's set up kind of in the same way. So this is the two thousand and sixteen version where we have the orange, the hundred and ten thousand. And Steve, if you go to the next slide. Uh you see a lot more, it's hard to see in this, but there's more green in this area. Springvale already had a lot of the properties above a hundred and ten thousand, but looking at a four-year chance are even more. There are still some properties that are below. Uh but it's definitely more and I'll go through the property values in the next slides as well. So Steve, if you want to go down. Uh so this is Springvale in two thousand and twelve, just looking at the property values. You see some white, some lighter green, um not a whole lot of dark green. Uh but if you scroll down to the next slide and this is again, the next, this slide we're looking at now is two thousand and sixteen, a lot more darker numbers uh across the board in that area. Some of the properties in this picture are uh absent. So if you look towards Barber Street, there's large slots over there and those, we just don't have the data for that right now. I think the assessor was working on them. Um and then the next slide will show the percent change of these properties. So here are the properties of concern highlighted, uh not as many as the Island Avenue or other parts of uh Sanford. But we do have the density here and we see large growth around these properties. Uh some of these properties um haven't gone. So there's one on Mill Street uh that you see that's still red, but there's two on Mill Street that are still red. But you do see that growth in that whole neighborhood as well, even in kind of looking at Webster Street along Placent Street. It's definitely all green still. Yeah, and that's what I looked at um part of this, just looking at the analysis and making sure that the properties are concerned are are we are seeing uh growth around these areas.
Excellent. Thank you, Charles. That was tremendous. Very good. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, the other aspect that Charles did for us is, uh I was under the impression prior to Charles started his work that the assessing department had already set up neighborhoods and they had already applied what's called the neighborhood factor. So it looks at the uh deterioration of property values that stems from having problematic properties, deteriorated properties within a given neighborhood. Uh those were not set up. Those were only in there in a couple of very specific areas, one of which was Island Avenue. Uh so Charles set up the neighborhoods for us by taking, you know, thousands of parcels and defining those into the neighborhoods and we defined those. So they are relevant to the uh CDBG blocks as well as the US Census tracks so that we can continue to use these data sets moving forward in the future.
Right.
The assessing department can now uh utilize those neighborhoods for the neighborhood factor and and utilize those moving moving forward. Uh and Charles has created a measurement tool that we could actually engage Charles to go back to two thousand and twelve, for example, so we'd have a twelve, sixteen and a twenty snapshot. And then we can utilize this going forward in the future.
Right.
What we are trying to measure is what is the rate of return on the investment that he's making in addressing these problematic properties? How quickly do we get the value back? How quickly do you see those uh the funds that have been expended? Some of, some of which are paid back, some of which are lost as part of that. How quickly is that value coming back? So Charles has created the basis of all of that for uh from his work. And we're, we're going to be able to maintain these as administrative data layers going forward and uh continue to use them as a measurement.
Excellent. Any, any questions from the City Council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Please.
Yeah, uh Charles, how do you spell your last name? I think we might be related.
Uh it's Tetlemann, T U T E L M A N.
Oh, that's close enough, Charles. Did a good job.
Thanks.
You can be his great grandfather, Charles.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
So uh uh go ahead, Luke. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Just um from looking at these maps, it it seems that the ones that are still, you know, considered um not, not favorable properties or increasing in value are the ones that were uh identified as problematic and a lot of them seem that the ones that we have had actually removed or torn down, those neighborhoods have actually bounced actually higher up. Um because I'm just noticing even though that that property might not be, you know, back on the market at a higher rate now, it's still the surrounding properties with no house there seems to be doing, those neighborhoods seem to be stronger. Am I correct by that assessment?
Uh yes, yes. Uh I know that more, I think Ian would be better to talk about the prom, the properties more specifically where they are. Uh some of these red properties um that we've seen that haven't changed over four-year period are still in the process of finding that plan of action. Some of them haven't even been demolished yet and they've only recently been identified. Uh but once these properties start to become addressed, it does take a while for us to see the return in the um in the assessing value, especially when you're looking at these total values. So the especially in the assessment percent changes in the property value maps I showed you, those include the land and building value. So there's a chance that the building has been knocked down and there hasn't been anything put back up yet. So when the assessor looks at that, over a four-year period, they've lost the entire structure, even if that was only ten thousand dollars on a forty thousand dollar land, that's still twenty percent less than it was before. Uh so that might be a reason why those specific properties aren't seeing that change in four years, where you do see some of these properties, um especially looking at the screen we're looking at now, uh kind of near Payne Street in between Mill Street, you do see those properties have grown over the last four years in terms of their value.
Excellent.
Yeah, um so to uh to Steve or or Charles, first of all, great job, Charles. Appreciate the information very much. Uh it it's, is it too early to be able to draw any, uh I guess, significant conclusions from this? In terms of, uh clearly it's working, uh it appears to be working well, uh maybe it could move a little faster. Uh but can you draw any conclusions to its success? And then if it is successful, how do we build on that success to make it move more faster and more uh of benefit to the community and the tax base?
Yeah, Steve, if you scroll up to this, yeah, the Island Avenue with the percent changes. Or I can keep talking anyway. Um if we do look at the growth, I think Steve kind of started hinting towards it. Um in my original um, not proposal, but my initial ideas was to look at forward, trying to do like a predictive modeling on this. Uh and after talking to Ian for over, you quickly showed that it would be really hard to predict what the housing market looks like in four years. And I'm not, I'm not a genius in that type of way, so I didn't feel comfortable going forward. Uh but what Steve was hitting on was going back and seeing the change between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and sixteen. Uh I think we feel pretty comfortable that that assessing data from two thousand and twenty uh for two thousand and twenty uh, two thousand and twelve is available. So what I think of future analysis to kind of confirm the changes over between these four-year periods, comparing the changes between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty. And if you do see even more cha- and larger percent change, then you can kind of start solidifying that these properties are concerned when to address them, do increase property values in the surrounding neighborhood. And that's just one. That's just one aspect to look at.
Yeah.
One of the elements I was striving for out of this analysis was to get the assessing department to utilize the neighborhood factor. Uh right now, they're heavily dependent upon the depreciation uh the various structures inside a given neighborhood, but the neighborhood was not previously defined. So you couldn't look at the neighborhood as a whole. You're looking at more on the individual structure. So what Charles was picking up was a combination of you know, uh physical depreciation, obsolescence, change in market rate values and and all of those sort of elements. We didn't have the stagnation of of certain factors to be able to get that measurement tool that I was seeking that ultimately we could utilize that tool to best place the limited amount of resources that the city has as far as addressing these properties. To date, it's been taking care of the most obvious and the worst of the worst as opposed to now that we're, we're uh getting a number of years into this, we can make more concerted decisions around where can we have the great, greatest impact for the dollar spent.
Yeah, and I think that's a great concept and I I will say something that hadn't occurred to me to look at it uh from the neighborhood perspective. Uh and it, that just gets more and more people on board with what we're trying to do here in the city and here as a council uh to promote uh the, an increase in in values in uh in people's houses and people's properties. Uh and obviously make their neighborhoods uh safer and more attractive. So uh it's a great job, everybody.
Yeah, well done, Charles. Well done, Steve and Ian. And I believe Ian's with us, but yeah, I mean, the, the ultimately, the goal around this whole program was to create safer housing for everyone. And we were finding countless properties in Sanford that were just literally unsafe or, you know, as we know, dangerous and hazardous, things of that nature, vacant, abandoned. So it's, it's great to know that the work we've been doing for the last, you know, four years uh is paying off and that certainly this information certainly leads you to believe that at this point, four years in, it sounds like we're, we're on the right track. So that, that's, that's great reinforcement for what we've been working on, so.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I, I'd like to see in, in the next four years, uh especially where we're investing in those parks and those neighborhoods, now we have those defined, if um how that helps too. So it'll be pretty cool seeing this going forward also as our city grows.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else from the council on this one?
Ooh.
All right, Charles, thank you so much. We appreciate the work you're doing for us and uh we look forward to uh the future endeavors.
All right, thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, next up is the second presentation, nineteen dash one zero three four dash zero one COVID nineteen update from the City Manager.
All right, just one moment. I'm retrieving the document for you. And let me increase the size somewhat here. So this presentation uh is leading into uh the developments we heard. So I know the mayor and I were both in the Zoom conference with Dr. Shaw's two o'clock uh presentation today about COVID nineteen as it pertains to the state. Much of that conversation that Dr. Shaw had today as far as the updates was relevant to Sanford, Maine specifically. Uh so I know the city council has raised concerns and questions around the recent outbreaks in Sanford and York County as a whole. And they're seeking further information pending any future actions that might need to be taken to best protect the city and preserve businesses and school operation. So starting today, uh when I came back to the office, I was out for four days last week. I made initial contacts, uh that's what I was seeing to the CDC. I communicated with Dr. Shaw's office, uh no response to either himself or uh from his assistant uh Peggy. I put communications into Director Robert Long, who's the director of their communications. His response is below and I'll cover that in a moment. Uh as always, I put a communication into Adam Hartwig. He is the York Region CDC liaison and my reference to as always, Adam is always available. I hit him on his cell phone and I get an immediate response to him. I listed out the concerns, asked questions about what was going to be presented prior to today's two o'clock uh press conference with Dr. Shaw and he indicated that he was going to communicate those concerns and questions directly up to the doctor's office and see if he could get a response for us. Uh today, nothing at this point in time. Further communications with Peggy Lawrence, who is uh the Executive Assistant in the, in the doctor's office, no response there as well. And I tried to get communications into Commissioner Lamru's office. Uh was unsuccessful. I was diverted to the CDC's hotline. The lady was very helpful. She took all of my questions and concerns down. I told her the urgency of tonight's meeting. Was trying to get a contact for somebody to come into the meeting this evening to have a dialogue with the city council as to, as to the city of Sanford specifically. She put that communication together, read it back to me, had it listed as urgent. She said somebody would reach out to you immediately. Uh that was at nine o'clock this morning. To date, no response. I did get a response later uh this morning from Robert Long. Again, he's their uh public relations communications director. He said, Mr. Buck, thank you for the information. About this evening's city council meeting, unfortunately, no one from the main CDC or DHHS is available to join you uh this evening. Uh he did say that the public health evaluation of Calvary Baptist Church is ongoing. That's an ongoing investigation that they can't comment about. It's important to note that the DHS does not license this or any other church in Maine and therefore does not have any authority to take licensing action against the church or associated individuals directly. State level enforcement in this situation would arise directly from the governor's executive order. This enforcement, should it occur, uh would not preclude enforcement happening at the municipal or county level. But we'll discuss that as we go further in into this evening. I was asking in uh Mr. Long about all outbreak centers in the city of Sanford. You know, the Sanford Fire Department is an outbreak center. We've been dealing with CDC directly on resolving that. We have another uh I believe seven-day period to get us by the twenty-eight-day period of no longer having any positive test results there. Uh the individuals that originally tested positive have been closed out by the CDC and we continue to work until we're unlisted as an outbreak center. We, I was made aware from uh Adam Hartwig that there were potentially two more outbreak centers to be named today. He couldn't say who that was. In today's conference, we did learn that the American Legion on Main Street was listed as an outbreak center as was the Lafayette Social Club was also listed as an outbreak center. We now have the Calvary Baptist Church, the Sanford Fire Department, um Lafayette Social Club and the American Legion here all listed as outbreak centers within the community, so are seeking further information as to what that means for the city of Sanford. Uh Dr. Shaw also disclosed today, and I have that in my notes, that it is evident that there is community spread inside the municipality of the city of Sanford at this point in time. As of today, there was, was no, there was no determined link between. As of today, there was was no, there was no determined link between uh any of these uh three outbreak centers, the the church, the uh four, the church, the fire department, um Lafayette, or the American Legion. None of those four outbreak centers have been linked together. Uh, that's what ge- gives us the definition of community spread in that it wasn't stemming from any one exposure element. These are, these have been outbreak centers all unto themselves. Uh, in discussion with the mayor uh earlier today, and in preparation for pending future city council actions, I did a review of the governor's orders as it relates to social distancing, face mask coverings, and other actions that might be helpful uh that if if they could be further emphasized and or acted upon uh in the future, just to address the city's current level of community spread. So it started uh back with uh the governor's order forty nine in fiscal year nineteen twenty as far as cloth coverings. That was a first executive order issued by the governor for which face coverings uh became mandated for certain aspects. A public setting was defined as indoor spaces that are accessible to the public. Public transportation came into uh where there was, it was applicable, and it lists those elements out. And it further gave examples of what public places are as far as grocery store, retail store, pharmacies, and such under that. Uh, individual means any person in such settings irrespective of whether the person is an employee, customer, vendor, or invitee, it would still apply. Uh, then it further defined what a cloth face covering is. Uh, it next appeared in the governor's order fifty five in fiscal year nineteen twenty in order to further implement the restarting plan. Under subsection eight, face coverings was further emphasized and strengthened, uh whereby it recognized that executive order forty nine is referenced previously. Cloth face covering should be worn at large gatherings, including those held outside. That's the first appearance of that. Each place of businesses, business accessible to the public uh must post readily visible signs notifying customers of the requirement to wear cloth face coverings in that setting. Such businesses may deny entry or service to a person who is not wearing a covering and is not otherwise exempt from the requirement to do so. That is the uh element that the city has used here for the municipal buildings, uh requesting people uh wear face masks coming into the municipal building to obtain obtain services in person. Uh, we have had some pushback on that early on, uh less pushback now, although that seems to be coming back around full of swing. If a person is unable to wear a face mask, we give them other options as to how we can provide the service to them, or we come outside of the building to provide the service to them remotely. Uh, it was then uh face mask, face coverings were then referenced again in this fiscal year in order number two in fiscal year twenty twenty one. In order of strengthening the use of face mask coverings, uh, it goes on to build upon the prior executive orders of forty nine and fifty five, uh whereby it said retail stores over fifty thousand square feet of shopping space, uh eating establishment, bars, tasting rooms, and lodging operations and accommodations shall implement measures requiring customers to wear face mask covering. This is where it put the onus upon the business itself to enforce uh people to wear a face mask coming into and obtaining services inside of the building. Further stated in subsection two additional enforcement that municipalities are authorized to enforce the use of face coverings on streets and sidewalks, in parks, and other the other public spaces where individuals are gathering and are not able to maintain at least six feet of physical distance from one another and to enforce the gathering limit. Review this with our legal counsel this afternoon that indicated that this is the framework that allow, would allow the municipality to put in other enforcement actions as a local ordinance, or they could just so uh so choose to enforce the state's mandates as already in place. Uh, the the authority by the governor to do this uh comes to us under thirty seven B subsection seven eighty six, which also provides for local enforcement by law uh by law enforcement entities such as the sheriff's department, the state police, as well as our own local police department. Where I next find the appearance under the governor's order number six in fiscal year twenty twenty one in order regarding outdoor gatherings and face coverings for children, uh whereby it put further limitations on the the gatherings, saying that the limit on on the number of persons for outdoor gatherings is five people per thousand square feet of occupiable outdoor space and not more than one hundred persons. And the limit on the number of persons for indoor gatherings remains at fifty persons as set forth in the private prior executive order back in nineteen twenty, order number fifty five. Legal options for enforcement, uh, again pursuant to the governor's emergency order under thirty seven dash B and order number two from twenty twenty one. It specifically states that the municipalities are authorized to enforce use of face covering on streets and sidewalks, in parks and public spaces where individuals are gathering and not able to maintain at least six feet of physical distance from one another and to enforce the gathering limits. The large reference there again, thirty seven B subsection seven eighty six. Under thirty seven B sub subsection seven eighty six, I won't read this, but this is the law enforcement that has duly appointed law enforcement officers at the local state sheriff's level uh and also use them arrest powers, uh, for duly appointed law enforcement officers as referenced. And then went further and looked at pursuant to the emergency powers by the city charter and the ordinance pursuant to twenty seven dash five, the emergency proclamation, uh, which was made on March twenty fourth, twenty twenty of this year, remains in effect. The dissolution of that was uh pursuant to subsection twenty seven dash six, uh, which stated that both the federal and state emergency declarations must first be lifted before our own emergency declaration comes off the table. So that emergency declaration is still in effect as the governor still has us under an emergency action. Also, as far as emergency or ordinances, the city council has exercised this on the emergency proclamation that was done uh for under our own emergency management purposes. They've also exercised that for the epidemic and pandemic policy. Uh, it's going forward as well as the closure of the buildings to the public and then the reopening. So under charter section two fourteen point one, it allows for the city council to enact emergency ordinances and to forego the public hearing and multiple read requirements of charter section two fourteen. Unless otherwise specified, the emergency ordinance must re be reconsidered and or dis dissolve prior to ninety days after, ninety one days after it's enacted. Uh, and then actions to consider is the council is uh discussing potentially holding an emergency meeting this Thursday, September tenth at six P M, uh, in order to act upon an emergency ordinance that may uh further improve public safety and reduce community spread within the city of Sanford. And I'll open it up at for council comments at this time.
Actually, before we open it up, is anyone here uh representing the CDC this evening? If if you're out there and you'd like to speak, please identify yourself and uh just introduce yourself and and I'll allow it. Thank you. Um, any, any questions in the council at this point?
Uh, listen, well, Steve, just a
Council's stack call, then we'll do the council title.
Uh, kind of a quick question, uh, possibly. So are you saying that the council's uh ability to uh enforce a or for the sake of discussion, a, a uh uh a more significant face mask ordinance is limited to uh sidewalks, uh parks, uh, those, those types of things, uh, outdoor areas, recreational areas? Uh, are you seeing that's where, that's what we uh potentially are limited to?
Uh, that's what the current governor's order is currently. I did consult with Attorney Sossier uh late this afternoon uh to ask if any other municipalities had put in uh face mask mandates. Uh, to his knowledge, none, none that he's worked with to date have done that. Uh, many put in stay at home orders early uh in the state's derivation of that. But he has not worked upon or uh helped issue any ordinances relevant to face mask coverings at this point in time.
So to kick that up one notch, can we use uh uh local law enforcement to enforce the governor's orders on uh shopping establishments?
You can.
Okay.
And just to clarify that, Council Stackwell and the city manager, the way I read local option and enforcement, uh, and in addition to streets and sidewalks, it's other public spaces where the individuals are gathered and not able to maintain at least six foot of physical distance. A public space is is a retail establishment, I assume it's a, you say public, is it where the public can go? Or is it a non-private entity? Where, where, how are we getting to the public uh perspective?
Uh, so in in this definition, public spaces would be your city parks, any publicly owned land, your trail systems, um, your schools, your municipal buildings, and such under that. Uh, your retail spaces where the public can um enter to obtain services, that falls under a different definition.
Okay, so I guess the question, and this is one of the things I've brought up many times as city manager, is my, my, I guess displeasure for, you know, various retail places in Sanford that do or don't enforce masks. And you, and you don't know walking into these places what you're gonna get. Um, you know, there, there's some that do a great job, and they're typically the the bigger ones, um, and which makes sense based on the fifty thousand square feet of shopping space. But um, and there's other small places that are doing a fine job too, but there's others who aren't. So i- is there any enforcement mechanisms to apply the mask mandate across the board in any retail operation?
So right now, it's, it's the, the state orders the fifty thousand square feet of shopping space. Uh, and it pertains to the various counties that are listed here, as well as a few individual towns, shall implement measures, measures, measures requiring customers to wear face mask covering. Uh, at the local level, you could uh drill that down to all businesses, I believe. Uh, I would clear that with legal counsel during the preparation and drafting of such ordinance, uh, so that there would be a further level of clarity that in order to prevent the community spread that's currently ongoing, that you were going to require individuals when they're entering any business, any size business, to wear their face covering. Right now, that's specific to the fifty thousand square feet in restaurant facilities.
Right. So the question always is what, what level of sort of leverage do the, the, uh, the municipal municipalities have in this conversation? So you're saying that we do have that authority to implement an ordinance that is more restrictive than this?
You do, yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, and as mentioned, uh, city manager mentioned a meeting proposal Thursday. I introduced that idea this morning or this afternoon after watching Dr. Shaw. Uh, it's clear that the, the community has spread throughout. Um, you know, we, we have a couple of of outbreak centers that that are highly publicized and other ones that are, they're lightly publicized. And uh, but one of the the takeaways that Steve mentioned uh that was concerning to me was just the general community spread that that is likely going on in Sanford. Um, so we, we, we've, you know, we, like every community and every municipality, we've, you know, tried our best to push out different ordinances to to reduce the spread. And I think until recently, that all worked fine. Um, but given the recent circumstances with certain organizations, it it no longer works fine. So we, we need to get a little more restrictive of how we go about the the reduction of the COVID nineteen spread here. So we'll be discussing those matters on Thursday at a special meeting at six o'clock uh to dive into details here about additional steps that cities take or can take if we choose so.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Consular Lanigan, I think Council Tuttle had the standup, and then I'm gonna get your app, okay?
I'm all set, I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, okay? Council Lanigan?
Um, I'm just curious, uh, what the state is doing for the CDC as far as the track and tracing, since there is such, if there is such wide, widespread community spread, like, do they have what type of resources do they have down, the community feels safe until we can get uh something solidified by the council?
They have uh intake teams. So that's what I was, when I went through the CDC switchboard today, uh, when I was trying to get to the commissioner's office, I diverted over to their hotline. They were trying to get me uh assigned to one of the intake teams that was working this particular area, uh, so that I could get a response from them, that I could get further information, relay concerns, and start that work. Uh, and again, to date, that was uh around nine o'clock this morning. I have no response from anybody in that regard at this point in time. Uh, Dr. Shaw did speak today about uh the contact tracing. I'm looking back to my notes here as, as far as some of the things that he said on contact tracing. Um, told what to expect if you get a call from somebody is that's doing the contact tracing when they're trying to chase this down. Again, of the four outbreak centers, so we have four of the six outbreak centers that have been identified for York County. Those six currently are Calvary Baptist Church, Lafayette Social Club, Sanford Legion, American Legion, Seal Rock Facility, York County Jail, and the Sanford Fire Department. Aside from Seal Rock and York County Jail, the other four are in the city of Sanford. That's uh, and since they're not connected, that's where the community spread definition came from. So that's, that's where you started to talk about when they're doing the contact tracing, when they, when they trace it back, and all of these are listed to any one point source, that gives them the indication that it's community spread.
So do you, do you have confidence that they're putting all, I mean, this sounds pretty bad here. And and from what I've been told, it is one of the, you know, not, not greatest outbreaks in the, in the state so far. So i- is, are you saying that, do you, do you have confidence that they have the amount of resources down here? Or do we need to maybe put a call into the governor's office to, or or representatives? I, I don't know. I, I'm kind of getting a mixed message.
Well, so uh no different than if our law enforcement uh uh division was doing an investigation. They're not able to comment on that ongoing investigation because I'm not part of their, their division. It would be no different than Chief Conley is doing an investigation. He cannot lend comment to that until the investigation is complete, so. Uh, I believe Chief Conley is on here. If he cares to comment as far as law enforcement. We know that the states, um, our department can enforce the state, the governor's executive orders. It is a class E crime, uh punishable by up to a ten thousand dollar fine and something less than one year imprisonment, uh, as determined by the the court process. Uh, and I talked to the chief earlier today as far as the issuance of um misdemeanors and or and or summoning under that. So Chief, are you with us? Are you able to comment on that?
Um, well, I mean, the comment I guess I would make is that, um, we do have the authority to enforce the governor's order, but there's um a lot of issues right now with that. Number one, um, we can't arrest anybody because um we are not, there's absolutely no place to take them. We can't take them to the York County Jail. Um, Cumberland County Jail will not accept them. So there's no real point in arresting anyone because um there's no way to get them into the jail where they would get a uh um, a, a hearing and and have um bonds set or any conditions put on them. We can bring them here, and we can have a bail bondsman come in here and put bail on them. Um, but we could, you know, it really isn't any purpose to that right now because we can't put them in jail. Uh, we can issue summonses. Um, and um, summonses if, um, you know, so obviously if someone was in, for instance, um uh Hannaford's and they were challenged, said you need to put a mask on, and they didn't put it on, then under the governor's, under the governor's emergency order, we'd be able to um charge them. But as was mentioned, I think, and I'm sorry, I, I don't remember who it was that said it. But one of the biggest issues we're having here is we have some places that'll enforce the mask ruling and some places that don't. I've been in every place that I've been in in Sanford in the past few weeks that I can recollect. Um, most people have been wearing masks, but you do run into people who are not wearing masks. Um, some of the smaller businesses, it's pretty rampant. Um, uh, so, um, you know, there is, uh, you know, there is some issue about the efficacy of actually charging someone or not um when you really can't even place them under arrest because if they refuse to sign the summons, then there's really no, I could arrest them, but I can't arrest them because I can't take them to the jail where there'll be health or an arraignment under normal circumstances. So it's kind of, um, it's very unusual time here, um, because we find ourselves on this quandary where, um, as a matter of fact, I'm actually considering whether to go back to um um, our policy that was back in um March, April, and May, where we were drastically reducing our contact with people, um, because I, you know, I'm not Because I, you know, if we have, if we have a significant community spread in Sanford, then I would prefer that my office would not be exposed to anyone who may have the virus if it's not necessary. Um, if to go for a long time, we weren't making traffic, you know, routine traffic stops, we weren't doing routine person stops. Nobody was allowed inside the station, all business took place outside the station or in the outer lobby. I'm actually contemplating whether we need to go back to that point to, um, you know, keep my offices here safe and not have an issue where I have a number of offices who have to quarantine for a period of time. So it is definitely a sticky wicket.
I know that Ann Hanselman, Council Hanselman, had questioned your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and thank you for Chief Conley. Part of my question was relative to enforcement action. Um, I certainly care deeply about our police department and and agree that we want to reduce the risk they're at. But, you know, I, if if we can't, if our neighbors aren't, you know, complying with face covering mandates from the state, for example, at, um, places like like Hanaford or other small retail establishments in town, you know, from a city perspective, we have to have some kind of enforcement ability because it's not working apparently to trust that people are gonna just do it. And and, you know, I haven't had an opportunity to visit social clubs lately or be very social myself in general. But, you know, I I'm told that face coverings weren't being worn in some of those locations. And so obviously, that that didn't work real well. And I think, you know, the question of enforcement has to be something we address. So I'd love to, you know, dive into this a bit more deeply next Thursday, or this Thursday, excuse me, at our meeting, in terms of if we're moving forward with additional, you know, action from the council, how we can do that in such a way that allows us to actually act upon it. Keeping our PD safe and as well as, um, you know, making it something that causes some some pain to folks if if that's what we're gonna do. So I I look forward to hearing more if we achieve, Conley, on ways we can do something that's gonna be effective, besides really just begging, um, our neighbors to to do this one thing of trying to help each other out with face coverings and social distancing.
Can I ask a quick question, Tom?
Yes, please.
So, um, what if we were to put the fine and the ticket on the businesses allowing, you know, kind of push it off from the individual where, you know, if we see noncompliance at a smaller retail shop after we would extend the governor's order to smaller businesses? How, you know, is there a way that we could actually fine the business and in some way attach it to any of the licenses or occupancy permits or anything that we do for businesses in town? I know it's a horrible way to go about it, but we need partners in this effort. And, you know, the individual is a lot harder to manage, you know, with our small outfit. There's twenty-three thousand people in town and there are far fewer businesses than that. Get them to be partners, essentially, it's it's cruel, it's a, you know, kind of a mean way of doing it, but enough is enough. I mean, there's no reason that these small stores can't mandate masks.
I agree. City Manager Buck, I don't know if you can answer that question. Is there a way then to take it away from sort of the the person at the front desk? Is it a way to apply fines and and other sort of, you know, remedies to directly to the business itself?
So one of the elements that I'm hearing is this this inconsistency, you know, the big box stores must must comply and the small businesses do not as far as signage and, um, the businesses being responsible for enforcing, so to so to speak, requiring that their customers coming in here to face mask covering. That's one of the elements that I'll be addressing with legal to see if there's sufficient latitude that the council could consider such measures.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, uh, following this this frame of thought, and I'm saying this for the council and others to maybe get their thinking caps on for Thursday night. I mean, there's, there's a second way to enforce this rule, and that's through some kind of financial loss. Basically, you hit them in the pocketbook is the, to coin a phrase. Uh, and we may, as Moore has mentioned and others, if we're we're unable to get people to comply and businesses to comply, then we try to figure out a way to hit them in the pocketbook. And and move them in in that general direction. So again, I say that just as food for thought for Thursday night.
Yeah, most of what I've seen, Consular, you know, I I looked up a couple of examples around the country as far as mask mandates, things of that nature. It's a fine. And and, you know, some of them are escalating from a warning to a fine, and, you know, the second warning and things of that, you know, just things of that nature, I'd say that our our ability to sort of, you know, uh, wait and and sort of make sure we're doing the right thing, we're at a little bit more of an urgent situation. So I I would start with the fine and and start the conversation there. But certainly, we can, we can have more of a dialogue prior to Thursday and make sure all the right elements are in there. I mean, you know, ideally, everybody just does the right thing.
Right.
What we thought was happening was that case, right? And and up until, you know, two weeks ago, I think everybody was feeling pretty good about our experiences so far. Uh, but you say the last two weeks, it's it's not been the case.
You you trust, you trust, and we all trust or trusted that people were going to do the right thing. And most people are. But as we've, we found recently just here in the state of Maine, it it just takes one errant mistake or oversight or whatever it might be, uh, and you have this, uh, this this problem that we're now dealing with, so.
And this, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Not to drag, I'm so sorry, not to drag this out, but I I just, just, I think it was a couple of weeks ago or or even a month ago, we we approved some money for people that were gonna go out and and help with the enforcement or at least the corrective actions, correct, through York County Community Action. Where are we on that? And is there any monies that they have available to kind of do some marketing material to get the word out? Like, we need your help, you know, almost like we need to do this as a partnership. That's the best way we're gonna get this done is is working together as a community. So so how can we do that and quickly? So just to kind of throw that out there, where we've already kind of hired those resources, or I don't know if we have.
We we have. City Manager Buck, do you want to discuss the folks over at York County Community Action?
We do. So there are six trained, uh, community health officers over there, ready and willing and out there currently to work with the small businesses to provide uh, personal protective equipment, to provide signage, uh, to provide guidance on the state's orders currently. If we do a local ordinance, they can provide guidance on that as well. So we could have them sweep through the smaller businesses that uh, have not not had to comply to the same level as the large box, big box stores as as currently. Uh, we could do a specific PSA around that. Kneely and company has been very, uh, very good to work with as far as getting a quick turnaround on a PSA. Uh, if if the council is doing something specific other than what the state is. Uh, City Director Househeel is on here this evening, I don't know if you wanna, if you're able to comment on this at this point in time, Ian?
Yeah, I think that's all accurate, Steve. There are six health educators out there, they've been employing a softer touch. They've been distributing a lot of material, um, material for these businesses, it's available. Uh, myself, I have observed a number of businesses that haven't been adhering to the masks. I've been working through these issues myself with the businesses, with the state and reporting back. The state has reported to me that the Department of Agriculture that does a lot of the convenience store inspections has been contacting their corporate relations and using those avenues to do enforcement at this time. Uh, and there have been some instances locally um, where they they have provided warnings to restaurants and other locations. So I could answer more questions if necessary, and we're also marketing to the public via social media and otherwise.
Hey, this is, you know, I think Council Lanigan said it well, I mean, you know, it is gonna be a partnership, Director Househeel, and I think that if we can utilize them particularly to get the word out of of any actions we take on Thursday, that would be ideal. And and I think one of the the lowest hanging fruit sort of issues, business particularly retailers are gonna have to deal with is if we do pass an ordinance relating to all retailers, it's gonna be signage, things of that nature, getting the word out to the customers without without having a problem. I mean, you know, there's, there's communities have done really well with this. You go to any of the beaches communities, they're, they're, they've got it down. You don't go into a retailer in in Kinnamukport without a mask on, it's very clear what the situation is. But there's signage, there's understanding, there's, you know, there's a lot of resources available, so I think we can work with that group to to help, you know, deliver that message and extend it beyond, beyond, you know, these meetings. So we look forward to working on that at that point. All right, anybody else? Questions?
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Yeah, if I could suggest that, um, we approach this in the proactive manner that Council of Lanigan has suggested and and others, that it that it is a partnership, that this is a public-private partnership, uh, that the city is is gonna partner with the private sector out there to, uh, let's, let's, let's think about an initiative that takes us from yellow back to green. So, you know, we we want to go green as a community. We want, we want to get us back to the sweet spot that we were in before community spread and and outbreak centers were identified here in the city. So what can we do to partner with everybody to get us to that point of get us back to green? Some some initiative in that regard, perhaps not having to be punitive, but but establishing that partnership and using our our available resources to get us back there.
What concerns me actually is even more that, um, nationally, if you look at the site COVID Act Now, we've gone from green and a very healthy green with our spread below one, and now we're at five point something, and we've gone from green to orange, they have a four level process. I mean, it ju, we just leapt up, and they see us as a place of like, fast if we don't get a control soon.
So may I ask a question? Hold on one second, I I'm I'm all for partnering. But I also don't want to spend, you know, my week developing, developing a bunch of ordinances that are are generally meaningless to people who don't want to wear face masks and don't want to social distance. I, you know, I I think, again, we we've, I I'd say the things we did prior to now have been partnering, and I think there was a lot of trust to put in people. So we we need to make sure at the very least, we're putting out an ordinance that that is effective. And and I'm all for partnering, and I hope people do partner with us. But but I'm not interested in in, you know, more sort of, you know, rhetoric around, you know, what should be done versus what needs to be done and what will be done. So I don't know if that makes sense or not, but, um, you know, I I I I I want to trust that everybody's gonna do the right thing, but then my my eyes sees other things. I I see something different in practice than I do on, on, you know, what people are supposed to be doing, so. So there's another question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Alan Parks and Rec Department. So just kind of going back on that trust, um, you know, we we have groups on our fields. We have youth groups on our fields at the moment. Now that there's two more outbreaks here, you know, I I wouldn't, I would feel more comfortable shutting it down completely for the next couple of days till we determine what happens Thursday. You know, I I get safety plans that all these groups present to me. You know, but but we're not, we're not really the enforcement police. I'm not there every night checking in on them and and making sure they're six feet distance and following that safety plan. So I don't, I don't know if it makes sense just to, for the next two days, and and we have dishevel rentals coming up on weekends. So, you know, maybe we shut it down maybe until Thursday.
So that that would be a discussion, I, I don't know if you need council action for that, uh, City Manager Buck, or not. You know, one of the things in in my note to Steve today was to assess Parks and Rec, all the activities around, all of our rentals in the short term. And again, th- these would be somewhat temporary measures until the numbers get rightened. But all of that would be applicable, all the things you just mentioned would be part of the discussion for Thursday. Uh, I'd say if you feel uncomfortable with the way this is going and and not comfortable sort of letting letting the, you know, the various groups use the fields, again, unless you need city council authority, I'd say I'm comfortable with you making the call on that. But City Manager Buck, what's your impression of that?
Yeah, so so my disappointment is, you know, uh, for much of this process to produce very good results for us, the city of Sanford, I think, uh, more so than many, we dug in and we did the hard work. Alan's Department and and Recreation, we had our summer youth programs here this year. They were, they were limited, but we did, we dug in, we did the work, we had our youth programs. It produced good results, we didn't have hits and such under that. Uh, same thing with municipal operations as a whole, we dug in, we did the work, put the protocols in place, and and we mustered on. Uh, I'd like to have the opportunity between now and Thursday, as we start to dra, as I start to draft up the elements for consideration with the city council, I'd like to have those reviewed first by the council before we shut things down. I think between now and Thursday, we can get those those points together, so I know we have a good legal standing for what the council is going to do. Then you take the appropriate action, and if we need to, if that's shutting certain Parks and Recreation elements down by the weekend, so be it. But I wouldn't want to take that action now until the city council moves forward.
And I also, we need to have some alignment with the school system. And I'm sure Alan, you're you're engaged in that conversation as well, I want to make sure that we're not overstepping anything that they're already on top of from a, from a youth activity perspective to, uh, you know, for example, I give an example, they have mask breaks for kids during school day. So how do we, you know, if we mandate masks in outdoor space, I don't want to overstep and and eliminate that as an option. We need to make sure we're not, um, creating more of a problem than we have. So just want to make sure that whatever we do is not gonna lean on sort of and create this problem at the school systems, which seem to be doing a very good job as far, as far as, you know, laying out what the expectations are for the students and teachers. Okay, anyone else file comments on this before we, you know, conclude the conversation and pick it up on Thursday evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Consular? Hanselman? No, I knew, I know her name, I just, I heard multiple voices there, sorry.
Who's first? Uh, just really quickly, in response to Alan's comment, which I really appreciate, and I hear what City Manager Buck is saying, you know, I I hope and would assume, Alan, because you're you're great at what you do, that you're communicating well with these teams, you're letting them know we have great concerns, you know, in our community right now and, um, giving them an opportunity to cancel events and or look at rescheduling. I assume you're doing all that heavy lifting for us regardless of, um, having to wait a few days for our action.
Yeah, I'll reach out to those, I'll definitely communicate tomorrow with all those groups.
Okay, so we we have some work to do between now and Thursday, is the message. And we need to make sure we get it right. And and really, the ultimate goal needs to be, you know, as City Manager, as City Manager Buck said, is is take our yellow back to green and reduce the spread and and make sure our folks are protected here. And it might be uncomfortable for a lot of people, but that's, that's unfortunately the business we're in, is to keep people safe in this situation, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes, I can hear you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would, I I agree with you totally, but I, my computer is, for some reason, it didn't charge enough, so you'll have to listen to me by phone, I promise.
Well, there you go. So welcome back to the meeting, Consular. Okay, okay, so, so no further comments, we'll move forward in the agenda. Which now I have misplaced, let's see, sorry. I believe we're on public comments, if I, if my memory serves me correctly. So I'm gonna open up to public comments. Anyone here from the public that would like to speak on behalf of a item that's not on the agenda currently? Generally, it's three or four minutes of you speaking to us, um, and letting us know what's on your mind. So anybody here to speak publicly this evening?
Yeah, we have comments.
I'm sorry?
Aaron Gonzalez, Charlie Austin.
Hi there, welcome.
Welcome.
So there's a problem property, a nuisance property at two seven seven Blanchard Road.
Burnville.
And we're trying to bring it to, um, the awareness of the council tonight. It's a known marijuana facility. And we just have some questions like, are there caregiver facilities allowed in the rural residential? Has a permit been filed for two seventy-seven Blanchard Road for this type of activity? There are signs outside stating THC, CBD, medical marijuana sales. There's cultivation requirements stated in the rules, like no, like a fence, electrical permits, excessive smells, complaints from customers from Charlie's business directly across the street. And there's a constant public nuisance under the disorderly housing chapter one one four, where I've seen the police at this property probably twelve to fifteen times. under the disorderly housing chapter one, one, four, where I've seen the police at this property probably twelve to fifteen times. I'll pass it over to Charlie Austin.
Yeah. I'm Charles Austin. I live at three zero four Blanchard Road. I have a, a business at three zero four Blanchard Road. Um, it's, this problem has been going on since twenty nineteen. This business was, uh, the baked boxer was given cease and desist orders.
Letters from Patrick, the fire marshal.
Letters from Patrick, the fire marshal. And, uh,
Continued parties.
Continued conversations with, uh, Jamie Cole, the codes officer. Um, they've continued to have these marijuana parties for three to five hundred people. They have more scheduled in the next two weeks. According to social media, they have six hundred plus invited to these parties. Parties are all night events. They s- they start Friday morning and they end Sunday night and they go all hours of the day and night. Um,
We'd just like the city council. We would just like the city council to be aware of the situation, see what we can do in the city to, um, prevent this from happening in the rural residential. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Excellent. Thank, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, I would say specifically to answer your questions, uh, feel free to reach out to the city manager's office tomorrow. And I, I'm well aware of the situation. I know all the city councillors a- are aware of it. And, uh, we'll continue to, to take the necessary steps to, 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 to relieve the situation. That's the best I can put it at this point.
Uh, Tom, can I just add a quick comment?
Yes.
That I believe, um, our representative has informed the state, um, regarding the marijuana piece about growing and potentially outside, what they're supposed to be able to do. So they, they are already aware of it. I don't know when Steve falls up. I just want him to be aware of that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're, we're on it. Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thanks for your, for your time. Steve, we did place a phone call to your office. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so I can just make you aware, Co- Codes is very aware Jamie Cole's on the phone tonight. Uh, there are notice of violations out there impending. I had discussions earlier today with the police chief. He has communications that he's going to hand deliver there prior to any other activities taking place, that the property is under heavy watch at this point in time.
Miss, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just because we're talking about COVID two seconds ago, I mean, I think it's very, very important that we make sure these events do not go on and that there's police out patrolling, um, over the next two weeks to make sure that this, and if we have to call the main DEA, whatever we have to do, because that could just, that could ruin everything and, and I'm just not into it.
Yeah, I, I agree. So let's, let's, we'll continue to follow up. I'll follow up with the city manager. Uh, this is one of the items we discussed before his vacation, uh, for sure. So, uh, we will, we'll get back on it.
Uh, well, Mr. Mayor, Council of Tuttle, I can only agree with Council of Landigan, then we, we need to get on the top of this ASAP, uh, considering the other things we're going through, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. I, I hundred percent, we totally agree. So gentlemen, thank you for coming out tonight. Uh, we appreciate the direct feedback. Um, just, you know, hang in there. We'll, we'll, we'll deal with it effectively, I'm sure. Okay, anything else on that topic? Okay, I know that, uh, it sounds like Diane Connolly has her hand up as well. Is Connolly with us? Okay, anyone else here to speak on, uh, public?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are. Hello.
Hi, sorry about that. I had to unmute myself. Um, I don't know, uh, what's going on with the, the lights at Cottage Winner and River. And also the lights at Main Street Oak in Springville. Um, there's like several calls have been made to recycle the lights, but there's still, um, malfunctioning, impeding traffic, backups. Can we find out what's going on with this?
Okay, thank you for that. We'll see you, Angel, and take it up.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Anyone else here to speak for public comments? Okay, seen none. We'll close public comments. Okay, next up, public hearing. City Council will take public comment in the following, uh, nineteen dash one zero two two dot zero one. A public hearing received comments in favor or against the new application for medical marijuana grower cultivator license submitted by Celulien LLC. Lindsay Holden at twenty-two Smart Drive Suite five dash six, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? See none. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Nineteen dash one zero two three dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application for medical marijuana grower cultivator license submitted by Celulien LLC, Richard Holden at twenty-two Smart Drive Suite five dash six, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? See none.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I might suggest that we have Jamie Cole, uh, speak on this, uh, just quickly. So there are three applications here. Um, I was confused when I originally went through all these. I know all three facility, all three applications have been inspected and they passed. Uh, but if Jamie could re- uh, could explain the relationship there, uh, because they're inside the same facility and they are, um, members of, of the same family. So Jamie?
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor Cody, members of the council. Um, Steve is correct, uh, this is a family. Um, you'll, you'll see three licenses tonight, uh, two for medical, one for adult use. And we currently have one license for medical already in the facility. Um, there are technically three separate suites. Um, Tyler is the one that currently has a license for medical. Uh, Lindsay and Richard are, are going for their license in the same suite, um, for medical, and then we're doing a third suite number for adult use. Uh, this is all in twenty-two Smart Drive, which is one of our eight approved properties. Um, the whole facility has now been inspected and meets code requirements. Um, as Steve said, there is a little bit of confusion because it's all the same name. Um, they, they are all family members and I have confirmed with the state, um, that Lindsay and, um, Richard are allowed to share that suite because they are family members.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, um, anyone here to speak on behalf of that item? Otherwise? Okay, seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Nineteen dash one zero two five dot zero one, a public hearing in favor or against the application for new adult use marijuana cultivation license from Pine Tree Maine LLC at twenty-two Smart Drive Suite three, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? See none. We'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda, any issues relating to the consent agenda? Speak up if you do, Consular.
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hearing none. We'll declare the consent agenda approved. Old business, none. New business nineteen dash one zero two zero dash zero one. Or it's a signed municipal warrant calling for the municipal election on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty. Motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. City Manager Buck, uh, who's, uh, given us the quick overview on this?
Uh, City Clerk Sue Cody's on the line. Uh, Sue, could you comment on the warrant, please?
You're muted, Sue, if you're talking.
Okay, I can, I can pick this up then. Um, what's different about the warrant this, this time is the polling places will open one hour earlier than normal. They're going, going to open at seven AM. That's to, uh, assist in allowing for the flow of, of, uh, what's anticipated to be a heavy flow of voters for the upcoming election. Um, and the promotion of absentee voting, uh, due to limits of fifty people at a time, including poll workers in the voting places. Uh, extended hours at the city clerk's office to accommodate in-person absentee voting and voter registration on three consecutive Saturdays preceding the election. And moving the absentee voting from the city clerk's office space to the city council chambers for the month of October. Uh, so as we recognize currently, uh, we're still trying to accommodate the flow of people. Taxes have come out. There's a large flow in the city offices. We're currently down on staff in there as well. But to have the, the number of people that are involved with both absentee balloting and voting, in-person voting, as well as to have the normal flow of conduct of business within the city clerk's office would far exceed the capacity, a safe capacity, uh, during these times of COVID. So as discussed, as, as the recent, uh, Public Safety Subcommittee was agreed, that we would move for the month of October, uh, all of the absentee voting, uh, and balloting operations to the third floor in the council chambers as ADA compliant for accessibility and such. Uh, and be able to better serve the public and keep the flow, uh, throughout this building.
Excellent. Quick question in regards to the election. Um, are masks mandatory at, at our voting spaces on the election?
Can you?
Oh, hi, Sue.
Hi, yes. I'm sorry. I didn't realize I had to program unmute my phone anyway. Um, in response to your question, Mayor Cody?
Yes.
About mask wearing. I spoke with Deputy Secretary of State Julie Flynn today specifically about that because I had emailed her last week and had not heard a response. And I wanted to be able to communicate that this evening, especially in light of the uptick of cases of COVID in our community and surrounding areas. Um, I explained to her, our current policy is no mask, no entry into the building. We do all, offer alternative measures. We will, you know, be able to go outside, deliver them an application to take a ballot home if they want to vote in their vehicles and then deposit the, uh, voted ballot in the, um, secure drop box that's going to be out back. They'll, they'll have many other options in addition to requesting online or just calling the office and us mailing them a ballot. So she did not see an issue with us enforcing our policy as it is. Um, there is no official determination by the Secretary of State regarding in-person absentee voting only on the actual voting day at the voting places, which it was on July fourteenth. Mask wearing was strongly recommended, but not mandatory. So nobody was turned away if they chose not to wear one, but I think that was very low percentage wise of anybody that did not wear a mask on July fourteenth, so.
Okay, so that, that, that then is the expectations for actually election day as well.
Uh, a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, first of all, I'm, I'm really glad to see that the, uh, uh, purchase of a secure box draw, uh, secure drop box, uh, for the return absentee ballots, uh, is, is going to happen. We received some funding for that, didn't we, uh, from the state or feds or something? Is that correct?
We will be reimbursed up to, um, eighty percent or maximum of eighteen hundred, I believe it was.
Okay.
For purchase and shipping involved.
Yeah, now, now I think I know where this is going to be located, but could you describe it, Sue, a little bit more? Details so people know where those secure drop boxes is going to be?
Yeah, if you come into the rear parking lot now, where you would be coming in the back entrance to, um, come into City Hall, to the left of that, there's a cement bulkhead which goes to the basement where police department was there, where they would have their dispatch center and, um, intakes for arrest venues before, if they think they were transported to the jail. Um, just to the right of that bulkhead, there's already the cement has been poured. Um, I did submit a picture of that to, um, Sean Sullivan and Lee Burnett for, um, I think they're going to do a story regarding absentee voting and we're going to mention that and show the pictures of where it will be.
Great. So I, I guess as I'm picturing in my mind, it would be just to the left of the back door coming into, uh, uh, the city clerk's office. Approximately.
But it, it, it's far enough away from the sidewalk where people will be queued in line to enter so that they'll be more than six feet away and will not have to commingle with any of those people.
Yeah.
At all.
All right, okay, great.
And there's also an ADA tip, there's also an ADA tip down there that allowed us to accommodate it in that area.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I, so I think that's going to be really important for people who are concerned about their, their ballot being counted if they mail it back. Uh, with this, uh, drop box, they'll be able to drive, as soon as the drop box is in place, they'll be able to drive there or get a ride there and either themselves or have somebody else place the, uh, ballot in the, in the drop box. So I, I think that's going to be very helpful for people who are concerned about, uh, mail-in ballots. So glad to see that.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And there will be, uh, full instructions included with all of the absentee ballots we mail with every option they have on how to return it, whether it's through the mail, hand delivering it to, uh, clerk staff or, um, depositing it into that box, so.
And, and I'm, I'm correct, right? They don't have to bring the, uh, the ballot back themselves. They can have somebody bring it back for them as long as they have all the correct signatures and everything on the inside of the ballot.
It's, it needs to be an immediate family member if it's not the local.
Okay, all right, good to know.
Yeah.
Excellent. A- anything else, Sue?
Um, I've received many, uh, emails and phone calls of people that are interested in helping with the election this year. Uh, got about twenty people. I will be sending out a package with some information of what opportunities are available assisting me throughout the month of October, conducting absentee voting in the chambers. Um, I've discussed with the IT department, getting a couple of computers with printers up there so we can, you know, on the spot, enter their absentee ballot request in the computer, just like if they were doing it in our office. So we don't have to handwrite everything and then spend half the night entering everything into the computer before I go home at the end of the night. So, um, that is doable. Bill Bodding has assured me that can be done and, um, he'll be working on that. So that will.
Great. It just one, just one more quick follow-up. How will people know when the drop box is in place? Is it be on our website or, um?
I can't.
How will they know that it's there?
Um, I will do a notice on the website. Probably have Larissa throw something out on Facebook. Um, I anticipate from the date I ordered, they had a, um, four to six week lead time. It should be here around October eighth or ninth, which is the end of the week that I would be mailing ballots. Anticipating I receive them as estimated by the Secretary of State by Friday, the second of October. I'll be stuffing envelopes all weekend long and delivering them to the post office on, uh, Monday, October fifth for mailing. So a couple of days of mail.
It's, is it a, is it a problem for you if they call, uh, the office to ask if it's set up, let's say, first part of October?
No.
Okay. So they can, so they, in addition to the other things, they can also call the city clerk's office if they're, uh, want to know whether the drop box is in place or not?
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
All right, Sam, Sam Andrew Buck, we have another meeting between now and, you know, the, the beginning of October, when, when a lot of this goes live. It would be nice to maybe have a, just a brief description of, uh, the absentee approach and, and how specifically to get the ballots, things of that nature, because I think there's going to be a lot more people that have never done that before looking to, to not show up on election day, but obvi- obviously are, they, they want to vote. Um, you know, a quick educational piece, you know, saving everybody a lot of, you know, saving a lot of the questions into the, into the clerk's office, things of that nature. And just a quick summary of something we can put together, maybe on Facebook, in a press release format, uh, or informational format. or informational format that we can get out to the public. Is that something we can do?
It is, and we talked about doing a PSA around that as well.
Okay, perfect, but again, just talking to the folks that have never done it before, that like to show up Election Day right now, probably, you know, looking for alternatives. That would be, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question, Council Tuttle.
Please.
Yeah, Sue, at the polls during the primary, we had young people sitting inside with chairs, directing folks what to do, and it really seemed to work out very good. Didn't know if we're going to do the same thing for the general election.
Uh, yes, I have solicited that as one of my jobs, if you will, to help with the voting process, whether it's during the month of October with absentee voting and traffic control, crap control, and also on November third at the polls as well, because by executive order that was signed by Governor Mills on October twenty-six, I think, there will still be a limit of fifty people in the polling place, and it must be set up socially distanced, so another reason why I'm requesting the polls open an hour early to try to get maybe some of those people that like to vote before going to work that extra time, and because I anticipate, even though we're, I'm going to have a very huge volume of absentee voting, I know there's still people that procrastinate and wait until the last minute and will be there in line waiting to vote in person and register to vote in person on November third, so.
Yeah, well, a lot of people like to do that, it's a tradition, and I really commend you for the job you did in the primary with those folks at the polls, Sue, and I'm glad it's continuing.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Ms. Cody this evening?
One last element, the the absentee voter receiving box that that is going to be bolted to the concrete pad out back will be under full camera observation twenty-four seven.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, this is actually an action item. I'll do the roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes.
W. Mayor Hanslop?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero, and my understanding, Ms. Cody, is that we have to sign that directly, right?
Yes, I was just going to mention that, thank you. Unfortunately, this isn't authority you can ask someone else to do on your behalf like we did for the primary, or, well, actually, it was for the school election in July. I need a minimum of four real signatures on the actual warrant to make it official.
Okay, so Sue, reach out to us, coordinate with Larissa, we'll get you the four signatures, not a problem.
Yep, and willing to do whatever I need to do to do that, I make house calls if necessary.
We we can meet at Wells Beach, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, next stop, nineteen dash one zero one three dot zero one, order to approve changes to city facility and fields fee structure as proposed. That motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Again.
Thank you. Director Grady, you with us?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks. So, yeah, we we just came up with a little bit of an adjustment, now that I've been here a few years, I'm starting to get a few more requests, especially from these private clubs which have, you know, some Sanford residents, but it's not a full team like SSYA or Little League or groups like that, so we decided to try and update our fields fees. We're starting to get a few more requests for Good Old Park and dealing with our park staff, we decided that, you know, we're pretty much losing money at the current rate, so we wanted to update that just a little bit, and a few other changes here, which were all in in red, I'm not sure if you want me to go over all of them, but it's just a few increases across the board just to kind of cover our parks maintenance fees, and the main thing being the fifty percent Sanford residents will get charged a fifty percent rate.
Okay, so if the team consists of, you know, half the kids are from Sanford, it'll be the number cut in half, is that...
Correct, as long as they have over fifty percent Sanford Springville residents, I'd cut that, cut that rate in half for them.
Understood. Has this been reviewed by any of the subcommittees?
Yes.
Yes, it has.
We saw this.
Under what, under property?
Yeah, weren't you there?
Of course, I remember, no, I don't...
You weren't there for that one, Mayor.
I don't, yes, we did review this, and we just, I, it's been a little while now, but we did discuss, was, was, we were mostly discussing hours at the time, weren't we, park closing hours, this one wasn't a big to-do.
Correct, we had gone into codes and ordinances and talked a lot more about that, but, um, but, yeah, this is, this we kind of breezed through fairly quickly.
Right. I don't see any big heartbreakers in here, I mean, is there any, are there any elements of this, do you think the public will be making our phones ring? Are there any, any gotchas in here?
There, there may...
I'm just going to say, Alan, it truly protects the residents with the charges.
Yeah, some...
More of the, it puts more on, more on the non-residents.
Yeah, my, my thing was with the, with the abundance of all these private club teams that are coming up, you know, you might have a coach that's a Sanford coach that's been coaching forever, you know, taken over a club team, but it's, it's a private club team, you're paying a lot more money to play in that, it's not a locally-run Sanford league like SSYA or Little League or, you know, Babe Ruth, so, so my thing is, you know, we should charge them, but, you know, give them a, give them a reduced rate because they are bringing a lot of Sanford kids. Like, the last two teams that I've rented to, they're, I think they have ten kids that are Sanford kids and three or four that are out-of-towners.
Okay, and you obviously hit them a deal, okay?
Correct.
I, I mean, I have no issues on my end, anybody else have questions for Director Grady?
Oh.
All right, okay, you for the update on that?
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes.
W. Mayor Hanslop?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. Thank you, Director Grady, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. All right, nineteen dash one zero two eight dash zero one, order to accept and approve the city financials for the, excuse me, the city financials for the fourth quarter of fiscal year nineteen twenty. That motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Mr. Champlin?
So this evening, I'm going to ask Ronnie Champlin, our finance director, to present the year-end reports and give you a summary of that, and ask for the city council to accept those pending going into the, the, the pending audit over the city's annual finances. So Ronnie?
Good evening, Mayor Cody, city council members. The following report is intended to provide the council with an update on the city's financial activity for the entire twelve months of fiscal year nineteen twenty. The following summary of major transactions most affecting the end of the month statements for the end of the fourth quarter. City council, coun, I'm sorry, City Hall was closed to the public March nineteenth and reopened May eighteenth. The fourth quarter ends one year of operations under the current municipal budget, having a target of a hundred percent for annualized budget administration. It is important to note that these financials are scheduled to be audited in October for a final financial report to be presented to the city council in December. The revenue summary report, including real estate and personal property tax collections, is closing at ninety-eight point six percent, which is one point four percent below the projection year-to-date. The decrease in revenue is due in large part to a drop in excise taxes from car registrations that were temporarily put on hold during the pandemic. Unlike other municipalities, Sanford did not see a significant decrease in funds from the state revenue sharing, Sanford actually received three hundred and two thousand dollars more than anticipated. School revenues are included in this report and account for seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand of the one point four percent shortfall. The expense summary report is closing with expenditures of twenty-seven million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, just one point eight percent under target year-to-date. The two thousand nineteen twenty budget has proven after twelve months of operations an accurate reflection of the city's total costs and service provisions. It is important to mention that this quarter, the city council, the city continued the hiring freeze, knowing that we would be facing anticipated shortfalls in revenues because of the pandemic. This budget has proven an accurate reflection of the city's total cost during this time. I have attached five year-to-date budget reports for your review. They are run by department, organization code, object code, revenue, and CIP. The general observations for this timeframe are as follows. The fourth quarter expense again closed at ninety-eight point two percent. At the end of the fiscal year, there are no significant unbudgeted or unanticipated expenditures to report, and the variance are shown on the attached reports. The fourth quarter revenue report again closed at ninety-eight point six percent. This is where the city should be with property taxes billed into installments, March and September. This report includes real estate taxes and personal property tax collections, and is a relative position for this time of year. The net cash position year-to-date is a positive twelve point seven million dollars. The net cash position is a balance sheet indication of the relative position of the budget at any given point in time. Last year, the net cash position year-to-date at the same time was twelve point two million dollars. Overall, in relation to the two thousand twenty adopted budget, given the two thousand twenty COVID-nineteen pandemic, there have been no additional material concerns noted for the last quarter. Staff continues to closely monitor all areas to ensure that any variances are recognized in timely fashion and appropriate mitigating action is taken. Steve and I are scheduled to meet this week to start mitigating some known variances for this current fiscal year, loss of revenue sharing, increase in workers' comp premiums, employee retirements, and buyouts. This is my report tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much, any questions for Director Champlin? So, overall, Ronnie, I guess we'd be comfortable, you're in a good space right now, as do our finances, I mean, you know, we don't know what the future brings, but I mean...
Right, this pandemic is just...
You're good.
Really unknown, I am good at this point for nineteen twenty, I am more concerned for twenty twenty-one. Like I said, we're going to meet this Thursday and go over the loss of revenue sharing, which we know is going to be about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, our increase in worker, workers' comp premium is about three hundred thousand dollars, and we have many, many retirements that we have to start planning for.
Okay. Okay, I, I was going, I was going to leave you on the good news, but thanks for that anyway, so. All right.
Well, I, I think the moral of the story is that we, as, as we predicted, you know, the nineteen twenty budget, we were able to finish that out in a strong position, that the impacts that we were going to see from COVID was not in, in the last fiscal year is moving forward in this fiscal year because of the delay of revenues and the delayed impact. And the more I look at this, the more I see the, the delays, and some of those delays, such as excise tax, that actually is going to provide us a buffer because we're getting it later than normal, but it's not going to make up the shortfalls to the extent that we're going to need to. So we'll start to mitigate those starting this week, and we'll report those back to the city council for any mitigating actions that might need to be taken by the council that we cannot do otherwise.
Excellent, thank you. Any, any other questions for Ms. Champlin?
Mr. Mayor, may I do a quick one?
Please.
Uh, just in, in regards to COVID relief funding, would those revenue streams already be on the books for this fiscal year ended, or we see those, Steve, in the following fiscal year?
No, they're, they're not on our books, we're not doing that on a accrual basis, so if, what, if and when we get the re, the receipt of the reimbursements under FEMA or credits back for expenses that we previously incurred, those will come in as a revenue to the current fiscal year.
Thank you.
Excellent, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just a brief comment, Stephen is twenty twenty, not nineteen twenty, right?
So...
Uh, we're currently, currently talking twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Okay.
Ronnie just gave the report on the nineteen twenty.
All right, her and I were there, yep.
That's right. All right, thank you for that, appreciate it, it is an action item, we'll do a roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hulahi?
Yes.
W. Mayor Hanslop?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero, thank you, Ronnie, appreciate it. All right, that concludes this evening's formal agenda, we're up for a council member comments, Council Hanselman?
Uh, thank you, just wanted to put out there that October one will be a candidate's night here in Sanford, it'll be livestreamed as well as recorded, there'll be some more information to follow, but we look forward to hearing from all the candidates, both locally as well as state candidates that evening, and then, you know, I, I think that a lot of us feel really powerless when it comes to COVID-nineteen, I, I know that I certainly do from a personal perspective, but I know one thing that we can do is try as best we can to socially distance and wear face coverings, and I just hope that we can make that a norm, our social moray here in Sanford with our neighbors and community, and I think it will really make a difference and get us back where we need to be, to get our kids in school and keep our businesses open, and I appreciate everybody's efforts on that end, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Stackpole?
Yeah, I, I just want to, I guess, Council Hanselman, she got in ahead of me, and she said exactly the right thing, that this is something that we need to do, this idea of community spread is, it's dangerous, and we need to nip it in the bud as quickly as possible, so yes, wear your face mask, wash your hands, sanitize your hands, and social distance, please.
Excellent. Okay, Council Tuttle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I can only agree with Council Stackpole and Hanselman, I, I had a question about the candidate's night for Council Hanselman, I didn't know if it was going to be in the council chambers or at the school.
Thank you, Council Tuttle, and I have an invitation going out that will clarify all that, but we are going to be using the Performing Arts Center as it's set up to be a little bit more easily televised, and it will be a great spot to work with WSSR TV and our Performing Arts Center staff to put out a really great event.
Well, and my only concerns is the echo there, and...
Yeah, thank you. So generally, the echo we've heard is when there's a Zoom portion of a meeting with the school department, so Mr. Williams at the Performing Arts Center has assured me that with, because we won't be having a Zoom portion to the event, it'll just be a livestream, that that should not be an issue.
And, Mr. Mayor, one more thing, I, my grandson Solomon had his first day at preschool, and they gave him a buzz cut, so he looked like a little man.
Excellent. Did it to him at school or before school?
Well, that was before school, but I was, you know... Yep.
Well, congratulations, I'm sure he's doing a fine job down there.
Yeah, a buzz cut, just like you, Mr. Mayor, right?
That's right, that's the new thing, everybody's doing it. Perfect, that's excellent. All right, Council Lanigan?
Yeah, I just want to, can I echo what everyone's saying about just buckling down and taking this serious again, and there's a lot that we've learned since the first time when we all sheltered in place, no one's asking for that, there's businesses that rely on being able to stay open, we all saw the devastation it took on some local business owners when they had to shut their doors because they couldn't have anybody there, and we just don't need to go back there, and so if you do care about your, you know, the, the person you know that owns that local store, you'll, you'll just do the right thing and just buckle down, go out when you have to, let the CDC do their job and trace this, get it under control, and, you know, we'll do what we can as a council, but it's, at the end of the day, it's all up to us, and just, just remember where we came from, and I feel like right now we're in a worse spot than then, so let's not go back there, and let's just all work together. And then, I have a second comment, is now that we have these streetlights in, in place, and I don't know if there's anything that we can expedite with Verizon or some 5G sort of solution, there's some kids that aren't going to have Wi-Fi, they don't have access to the internet readily, I, I'm, I'm not trying to slam any company, but the reliance on Atlantic broadband is, is shoddy at best on some days, and we're going to have a lot of parents working at home and educating their kids for the next month, so we really, I don't know if there's anything that the, the city could do to expedite... So we really, I don't know if there's anything that the city could do to expedite through some, you know, sort of COVID money or something to get, you know, some relief for these kids that are gonna really need to rely on good internet service, or they're gonna fall even more behind. And I just, I don't wanna see it. So if there's anything the city could do, that'd be great.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll put that under future agenda as well.
Thanks.
All right, Council Hurley?
Yes, just a few things tonight. One, I've been in contact with both Ian and Jamie regarding yard sales. I don't know what, there's been a perpetual yard sale in Springvale. You know what I'm talking about on Main Street. It just got worse over the weekend. It's like a business at this point. It's a yard sale business. We have an ordinance in place. I'm sure they are working on it, but I just, I don't, we have to get that one under control. It actually gets dangerous after a while, right on Route one oh nine like that. So some people have been talking on Facebook about card registrations and the problem with the main motor vehicle in Springvale and are asking why we can't do plates in Sanford. Because other communities do it. I'm sure there's a reason we got rid of it. But if we're gonna end up losing our motor vehicle in the long run, we might wanna consider talking about whether we could do plates here in the city hall. So I don't know if many people know who are running for public office, signs. You can't put them out until, I think, September twenty-second in any public way. You can put it on a private property. You just can't do it public way. Don't forget to label your sign that says who it was paid for, like paid for by the candidate. And don't forget to put the date that you put it on the lawn, because that's a new regulation this year. So just jot on a date when you set it into place. Evictions, the federal government has extended evictions. I just wanted to let people know. That does not mean you don't have to pay your rent. It is a way to prevent you from going homeless if you are truly in dire circumstances. I would encourage you to work with your landlord. Go to the city if you have to. Go to DHS if you have to. Find ways to pay your rent because in the long run, you know, you're better off keeping your home than losing it down the road when there's no hope. If that number builds up to the point where you can't pay it six months from now, you're gonna be homeless. And that's not, you wanna try to stay with it, stay on top of it. I'm just gonna echo what everybody else has been saying. We have it within our power to stop this community spread. And someone sent me a cute little phrase. It's the three W's. Watch your distance, wash your hands, and wear your mask. So if we can just throw out the three W's to people, I think we can get this under control in our community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hanslop?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to remind everybody to be safe, to be thoughtful, to care for each other, and just in general, to be kind. We need more kindness these days. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to embarrass you, but I just wanna clarify that I was not laughing at Council Hurley's comments. I was laughing at your cat's tail.
You saw that, huh?
Yeah, I saw that, so.
I thought that means you're supposed to apologize to me, though.
I apologize to you too, so.
My cat, my cat, this one, is like obsessed with me like in a bad way.
Because your girls have gone to college.
It's like Fatal Attraction.
The pets are moving in. The kids are gone. The pets are moving in, yeah.
This one is like, you know, one of my. Coon cat, Tom? That's not the coon cat. The coon cat is a little lazier in that she wouldn't bother jumping on me. Anyway, everybody sounds very kind probably compared to what I'm gonna say next. And I don't, I don't prepare statements very often. But I spent the last week or so trying to get my head around my feelings as far as what's going on in the community. And I did put together a statement and hopefully we can, somehow somebody can take something from it. So this is why I wrote, "It is time for our community to step up and do the right thing for our kids. Many of our students started school today, and now we know, including Council Tuttle's grandson. They are mandated to wear masks, social distance, wash their hands, alter their schedules, and do this all without many of the social activities they're normally accustomed to. These are the expectations for our students, but as adults, we are not practicing what we preach. As most of you know, the recent outbreaks in York County have changed our status from green to yellow. I would love to say that I'm surprised by the increase in cases and change in designation, but I am not. For whatever reason, there are still a great number of people in Sanford who proactively choose not to adhere to the governor's executive orders. This is not just the current high-profile outbreak centers I am referring to. Go into any store in Sanford and you will see people without masks and not distancing themselves. Strangely, this is not the case in other communities I visit. The beach towns take it very seriously and you see almost full compliance. Even on the beach itself, walking to and from the beach, people are wearing masks. These towns get it. It's connected to their livelihood and they are working together towards common goals of supporting their businesses and residents. From a community perspective, Sanford needs to start focusing on a common goal. And this is to live our lives in a manner that allows our children to get back to school and stay there. For many kids, going to school means being safe, fed, and free from abuse and neglect. If you are refusing to adhere to the governor's orders simply on the basis of your individual freedoms, then you, and I don't mean the collective you, I mean you personally, are responsible for any delays to our kids going to school, playing sports, and participating in activities. At this point, it's very clear what the minimum expectations are. Wear a mask, social distance, minimize gatherings, stay at home if you're sick, and certainly if you're COVID-nineteen positive, stay at home. If you are choosing not to follow these guidelines, it's a conscious decision. You and/or your group are choosing yourself over our schoolkids. And as you say, it's your right, but the people who follow the guidelines and make the necessary sacrifices also have rights. And one of those rights is to hold you responsible for what happens next. Your decisions have consequences. We don't have to agree on the governor's orders or the science behind wearing a mask or social distancing. If we are not aligned on those points, I would not spend any of my time trying to convince you otherwise. We will never agree. What we can agree on is that we should rally around our students, our Sanford students. As adults, we had our time in school. We probably all complained about it at one time or another, and I certainly did. But in reality, the memories from those days are pretty great. We should not be putting our kids in a position that they lose another school year. So we need to choose ourselves, others over ourselves and put aside the labels that divide us. This time should be about individual sacrifice, compassion, and showing our children what it means to be a positive member of the community. It's time for us to step up and do the right thing for our kids. So thank you. I appreciate the time tonight. So that's, that's my comment for this evening.
All right.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, future agenda items?
I had two, two, but Morris had one of them. It was the, I guess, making Sanford a full-service registration, car registration thing through, you know, the DMV. I don't know how you go about that, but I guess that's what it's called. And then I just was out registering a car today there and I noticed that it's starting to get a little chilly. And we've had staff kind of outside all summer where it's been nice, but as the weather changes, I just didn't know if there was plans in the works to get them some heat, so that's all.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The streetlight project, let's not miss something. Are we gonna get, is the council gonna get a public update on the project and so that the public knows, I mean, that was a bond issue? Be nice for them to know that the project's complete and.
I thought we got an update. Was that a committee?
That was at the subcommittee.
Okay, so Steve, maybe we could replicate that. That guy that delivered that presentation was great. If we could have him come to one of the future council meetings, that would be, that would be ideal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Stackpole. Any other future agenda items?
No, but Tom, thanks for your words tonight. I think it was important. And I just, you know, my personal opinion, I really think it should be cut and pasted and allowed to go a little further than just our little meeting here. If you allow me to, I'll take care of that. I'll call Sarah.
Maybe you could put that on a sign and drag it behind one of the planes flying.
Now, I'm just thinking about, you know, here's an excerpt from our meeting tonight and just throw it out there just to get people, for the most part, any posts that have to do with wearing your mask and improving the situation for the community is met with huge support compared to people, the people who are saying, you know, I wanna do what I wanna do. I've got my own personal liberties. That's not playing well with people. People really want things to be better than they have been over the past two weeks.
We can certainly, we can certainly make that happen.
Okay.
I know you have the technology and the know-how to get that done.
I'm already on it.
Your hands have already got it on Facebook.
Well, we ladies in politics have a little group chat and we've been talking about this quite a bit. And you just got some rave reviews from the women in politics here in Sanford, so.
Oh, well, that's it. Thank you. The wife will be critical, I'm sure, so.
Oh, no, we text her updates too.
All right. Any other future agenda items?
Oh.
Okay, well, seeing none. Thank you for your patience, everyone. We will see you Thursday evening, six PM. To discuss a lot more COVID-related, you know, COVID-nineteen related issues. And then, good evening. Take care. Be well.
Thank you.